I'm gonna thank everyone for being here, um, it's a maintenance development meeting and um, I'll just go around the board, um, not to take too long, uh, just to introduce everyone, and the departments of who everyone is. So with that in mind, now I see, uh, John, we'll go John and we'll go around.
Yeah, hey, good afternoon, John Gilbert, project manager in the real estate, um, division of Wayfinders CDC out in Springfield.
And I see, uh, is that Miss McCaffery, McCafferty?
Hi, Jerry McCafferty, uh, the city's director of housing.
Okay, and I see, uh, PT Kegelman.
Tom Kegelman, executive director, Home City Development.
And, uh, I see, uh, Nika's iPhone. And Kendrick Thorin.
Good afternoon, Malo.
Kendrick, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, I'm Kendrick Thornton, I'm with, uh, Home City Development, um, a project manager.
Thank you, and I see, uh, my colleague councilman, Click Bruce. Okay, um, and really, uh, I believe this is kind of, um, this is gonna be a meeting where you guys are gonna pretty much, uh, lay out certain, uh, things and, uh, projects, just give a little bit of information to the city and the body. So with the, without it, do I, I'd let, give you guys the floor.
Great, I can, um, start and sort of tie it all together. Um, we thought it made sense to have a subcommittee meeting because, um, this involves nine orders that will be in front of the council on Monday night, and I know it'll probably be a packed agenda anyway, so I wanted to make sure there's time to ask any questions, get any information out, uh, that you're interested in. Um, this is, uh, the, it's eleven orders, but it involves transfer of fourteen parcels. Um, this actually ends up being two projects that are separate projects, but they're very similar, so, uh, it seems to, to, to lay them out together and then, uh, a little more about each of them separately. So it's two projects that are both focused on redevelopment of housing in the Old Hill neighborhood, although there's a couple of properties that are also in Upper Hill neighborhood. As I said, it's fourteen parcels, they're gonna be redeveloped into twelve new homes, uh, that will be affordable to households, some at the level of eighty percent of the area median income, and some at the level of a hundred percent of the area median income. The overall context of this is there's been work going on for a couple of years, um, around the Mason Square neighborhoods, and with a particular focus on Old Hill, um, that is brought together by this, this technical assistance project of mass housing, which is called the Neighborhood Hub. So, uh, community members have been coming together, um, and created some priorities, um, and, uh, this is part of the work that is coming out of that. So for two years or more, it's been Hope CDC, some local developers, including Elijah Naylor and Donald Mitchell, the Old Hill Neighborhood Council, Springfield Neighborhood Housing Services, uh, Representative Bud Williams, some residents from the neighborhoods, and then Wayfinders and, uh, uh, Home City Development, as well as actually also, uh, Revitalize CDC, um, so have been coming together, a focus on housing revitalization, and, um, have, uh, looked at a priority issue of redeveloping vacant lots, um, or developing vacant lots into new housing, and then redeveloping vacant distressed homes. Um, so out of this has sort of come two projects. First one I'm gonna talk about is what is Home City Development? Home City Development, um, their, their, the, the, um, transfers of properties to them, uh, there's eleven parcels going to them, they're going into the name Old Hill Infill LLC. This is a project that will build, um, ultimately ten new homes, although on these lots, it's nine homes. Um, new homes, the city initiated this, uh, a series of RFPs to get properties out specifically around the new Swan de Berry School, with the idea of, um, reactivating those vacant lots, um, and providing housing to people in the neighborhood or are potentially going to the school with kids at the school. Um, this is, has received significant funding from Mass Housing, um, has contributed two million dollars to this project, so it's really brought in some state funding, there's also city funding in it. Um, and I, you know, this is a project that is, um, has been in the works for several years. Um, the conveyance of this property is one of the later steps that will allow, uh, construction to start not so long after. Um, so that's, that's project one. Project two is Wayfinders, and this is conveyance of three parcels. These are the parcels that are going to Springfield City of Homes Development, um, that's, uh, the subsidiary they've created. Um, this has been sort of another effort that's been operating alongside of the Neighborhood Hub work. Um, Wayfinders has been working very closely with former Housing Court, uh, Judge Dina Fine, working on a concept to address vacant blighted homes, so those, either are home, not vacant parcels, but they have homes on them, but they're long, long vacant, like many, many years vacant and very distressed. Um, and this effort is to turn those around and turn them into homeownership opportunities. The three blighted homes, uh, that they're looking at here are so distressed, are in such bad shape that they need to be demolished, so the plan is to demolish those homes and build new houses. They are also at the point where they're ready to go, um, and they're also at the point where they're ready to go, uh, once the properties are conveyed to them. They have also brought in additional money from, uh, the Mass Housing Neighborhood Stabilization Program, so, uh, uh, state housing, state funding there, they've brought in money from the Mass Mutual Foundation, so private funds, and then there's also an earmark that they've secured, uh, that was, um, uh, through Representative Carlos Gonzalez. Um, so again, it's bringing in a lot of outside money to be able to get this new development in our neighborhood and get new homeowners in our neighborhood, in our, in the Old Hill neighborhood. Um, both of these projects are supported by the Old Hill Neighborhood Council, who had multiple times where they were able to review them, um, during RFPs, they supported applications for funding, um, they had a letter of support to the city council as well. Um, and, uh, yeah, I guess that's the overview, and then we have both, uh, Wayfinders and, uh, Home City Housing here, if you have questions or wanna talk any further about the projects.
Thank you, I, I definitely appreciate you, um. I would just say, I, 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 you know, it, it is my area, I've walked, and I am the chief of staff to state rep bodies. Um, I do understand the project, so, I, I don't know, maybe you guys don't know that, um, Carlos Rep Gonzalez, really it's an effort, a joint effort, like no actual rep can obtain funding without the others, um, so it was on behalf of state rep also Bud Williams and the rest of the Western Mass body. Um, I also, um, just one thing that I kind of, uh, I have a little bit of, uh, and, and I, I love the program, everything about it, I love the work that you guys do. Uh, my discrepancy was when I, I, I've talked, talked to Peter, um, who was the head of Wayfinders at one point. Uh, when you do development, especially in my area and areas like mine, it, it, it's always sometimes very difficult for, um, individuals in my area to obtain them homes based on maybe credit requirements and, uh, just, just, just finances. So I've always talked to him and, and, and would always emphasize, and I, and I, I hope maybe one day you, you, you guys will implement it, I'll come and sit down and explain, it's kind of like a co-signer program where some of the individuals who might not meet the, uh, financial qualifications and the credit qualifications, maybe put one of them aside, some, one of those like eleven houses aside, and allowing an individual, you co-sign for them and allowing them to go through classes and the necessary things, um, and, and now co-sign, give them the house, and co-sign, and hopefully we can teach people how to obtain a home and, and be a co-signer ourselves, as far as a city or an organization. Um, and, and when I talked to Peter, he, he retired, unfortunately, he thought it was a great idea, and, and I'm sure, you know, Wayfinders, they do a great job. Um, but I wanna, what, what are the requirements when it comes to actually being up to, to, to obtain these housing? You know, I don't, I, I, I would hate, um, say, uh, uh, the community itself to sit there, and they're like, hey, and then we see homes being bought, and then, hey, why, you know, we, we, it's fine to have new neighbors, but out of those new neighbors, what are the actual chances of people in the actual community being able to obtain housing there? Is what my concern is, kind of.
Can I, can I answer that, Malo? Can I?
Yeah, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Um, I've had the opportunity to have a very, very extensive education over the last few months on exactly that topic. Um, as you know, we're in the process of selling forty homes in the South End, and they are going, the, the lottery that was initially, uh, created, made it a priority for Springfield residents. It made it a priority for people who come from what they call distressed communities. I'm not sure exactly how they define that, but much of Springfield fit into that category. And we did a lot of outreach, and just as you described, the biggest barriers that we found were people who were not prepared to meet the credit requirements of the lenders. Um, a lot of the, uh, lenders needed a, a better credit score, or they needed a lower debt to income ratio, or they needed a little more down payment, and, um, we worked with those folks, and one of the interesting things that, uh, came up um, is the FHA insurance, um, mortgage, insured mortgage program, which, as you may know, provides a, um, a, a lower credit rating uh, and a higher debt to income, uh, percentage in order to qualify. Uh, because the government, of course, is ensuring the mortgage or his interest, mortgagee's interest in the, um, in the loan. So that, what we found was, um, a very valuable tool, the FHA mortgage insurance. The program that we have in, um, in the South End, unfortunately, the money that comes through the state and the others is not, uh, is subject to deed restrictions that FHA just simply will not, um, abide by. This is a program that was set up by the state, it's, um, it's not something that can be waived, and unfortunately, um, we weren't able to use the FHA insurance in that project. I will say that a couple of local lenders have stepped up and said, you know what? Even though they are not getting FHA insurance, we're willing to be flexible and consider people with higher debt to income and lower credit scores, such that if anybody has an FHA insurance, uh, commitment, we will consider them for our own in-house loan. And, uh, one of the local banks, New Valley Bank, of course, you're familiar with, um, has stepped up to help us with that. Um, and we're reaching out to other banks like Mumps and Savings and others who are equally interested in doing that. Now, having said all that, I can go in for another hour and a half on, on all these crazy obstacles that people have. The, the other thing that I will note is this program and this project that we're doing, and I assume it's also the one that, uh, Wayfinders is doing, we don't have that problem, they can use FHA insurance, and that is going to be a big help. We were very adamant, Jerry could tell you, she was very eloquent in the meetings with the, with the state, that we must have the ability to allow our borrowers to use FHA insurance. And, you know, it's, uh, it's a continuing process, and we're working very hard and, um, you know, we're gonna make sure we give the opportunities to, to people who, um, who are coming from the community to purchase these homes. I can, I can guarantee you, we're gonna do everything we can. Most of our marketing is to local employers, we have, uh, um, you know, arrangements with MGM, we have arrangements with Bay State, we're trying to set up the arrangements with, uh, Big Y, um, and, uh, working with the churches and, uh, community groups, we do tables at, uh, Stone Soul, the Caribbean Festival, other places, making sure that the people in the community are hearing about it. I was on WTCC this morning with, uh, Andrew, and, uh, we're gonna be pushing. So we believe we're gonna have a pretty good, uh, representation of buyers from the immediate community.
Yeah, and I, and, and thank you, thank you, um, for your input, I definitely appreciate it, um. And as far as buyers, I know we're gonna have more than enough buyers, that's never the issue. I don't think there's ever too many, too much housing, everybody's wondering, um, can we get more? I know it's one, one hundred percent needed, um, and I, I'm glad to hear that, uh, you, you know, you guys are doing things to make sure that, you know, the average person, regular people can actually obtain housing. I don't think a lot of people understand, you build them, but you gotta be able to make sure people can update them. So I'm, I, I, it definitely is, I, I, I commend you for, um, working with the different groups. I think we gotta go do a little bit more, um, on everyone's end to kind of like promote some of the stuff. Um, how about the actual, uh, work itself with, 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 with the, uh, construction? And do you guys already have the, 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 uh, people are gonna do the work in, in, in place? Or is, is there still potential for, um, local contractors to bid on things?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that real quickly from the, uh, you know, Way, Wayfinder side, um, because actually we had some early-stage discussions with Tom Kegelman, you know, Home City Development, trying to suss out, um, really like the widest possible list of Springfield local MWBE general contractors. I mean, that's what we were focused on from the get-go, um, and, you know, I, I was looking over just kind of like the, the due diligence, you know, that we had done, uh, prior to this meeting. And, you know, in addition to speaking, of course, with Tom, who provided us with a list that Home City had put together of, I think it was like a hundred and sixteen Western Massachusetts contractors, not just GCs, it's, you know, contractors in general, a hundred and five non-Western Mass. Um, you know, I went through a list from Mass Housing from the, sorry? We good?
I got prob, I got probably a list of maybe ten who always apply and never get it.
Okay.
So maybe I can get, I ask, I'll have to maybe give you guys those ten, and hopefully out of those ten, maybe one can get it.
Yeah, so, so the interesting thing, right, is there was a, there was a large list to begin with, right? And then as I cross-references to Mass Housing's list, NHIC's list, Boston Housing Authority's list, the state's certified MWBE list, right, and narrowed it down, I came up with a list of twelve potential GCs in the, um, in the Springfield area. Five of those I found to be no longer in business. Two of those, um, the residential work was actually not within their scope of services, so they were doing more commercial and industrial work. Two of those twelve were not interested in work of this scale, they had sort of scaled their operations up. In fact, so they were doing, um, larger projects, this kind of didn't fit their, uh, competitive bidding, and that left a list of three, looking at the notes, yes, three. Um, so we engaged all three of those, um, in addition to one, um, one recommendation that came sort of from some internal sources, uh, Springfield local, not a licensed general contractor, but a contractor. And, uh, we, Wayfinders has selected and contracted formally with, as of two weeks ago, we executed the contract with, um, in fact, Seneca Slaughter of Sage Home Builders. So, um, you know, through the review process, Seneca, um, in, in a sort of odd way, as we whittle this list down, was by far, um, really exactly what we were looking for. He has a brokerage service that's been in business since twenty fifteen, and his general contracting business been in business since twenty nineteen, extensive experience, and he's a family. Come again?
I'm familiar who, I'm familiar who he is.
Okay.
Um, what I'm asking you though, and it, um, just, i- i- is there any other actual, um, uh, projects that you guys still have involved based on this project that other contractors might be able to, uh, bid on?
Yeah, absolutely, um, not that we're discussing at this phase today, Seneca has been contracted for these first three new construction, but we do have one, uh, property that we've taken title to, which will be a renovation that we will be looking for a general contractor on, um, that makes four, and then three additional projects in our pipeline that we would need a GC on as well. So our, our focus is on the queue that we have, but, you know, Counselor Brown, um, you know, definitely open to your suggestions and, uh, sharing of, you know, lists, contacts that you might have to do a cross-reference here um, and see if there's any way that we can involve those GCs in these additional four projects that we have forthcoming.
Yeah, because I would be, I know there's a lot of, um, entities that are out, I met a young lady who, um, a black young lady who does, I think she does like floors or something like that. Um, she's been around, there's, you know, there's people who I know, and they're credible people. Um, they just asked me as far as how they can obtain, um, certain, uh, bids and things like that. And I tried to explain to them, I don't, I mean, I know a little bit, you know? I'm gonna have to say, you gotta talk to John. But, uh, there are people out there who are, um, who are really interested and even like contractors who would be interested in, uh, subbing out some of the work. Um, so if you can send me, um, some of your contacts and I, I can get it to them. Um, and, and even with, uh, the Home City Housing, if you guys can get me some of those con- contacts, cause, um, you know, I, I wanna make sure, I know not only, I mean, I know a lot of times we, we, we worry about, I worry about minority stuff like that also, but I also worry about local stuff also, you know, just people in general, we gotta make sure that the contractors around here are getting, you know, getting the jobs. Um, and a lot of them, they don't know, and, and it's not your fault, a lot of times it's just they don't know how to contact you. It's a lot of our fault, it's like, uh,
Oh, yeah.
It's like an effort, you know?
Yes. Yeah, absolutely, I mean, you know, from our, and this was all our outreach to them, right? And, uh, our continued outreach, just following up even when, you know, certain ones weren't selected, saying, hey, we have more in queue, we wanna keep you in mind. Um, but no, absolutely to your point, right? I mean, is there a way for these individuals to even be aware and abreast of projects that we have going on so that they know in advance and can, you know, and can connect with us? Um, yeah, you know, we're, we're all about, you know, bridging that gap as much as we can here.
And I'll just add one more thing, Malo, and that we've been pushing for years to get the city and, uh, the others in the area to work together to create an agency to support minority local contractors to get the kind of help they need to make connections. We did find a model agency working out of Hartford, brought her up, talked to the city council, she was more or less, uh, you know, she was out of state, that was her problem. But, you know, we've been working recently with Drew Melendez over there and with, uh, others in the community, including John and Wayfinders, to get a program started in this city that is gonna do exactly what you're talking about, that's gonna advocate for minority contractors, that's going to bring them together, and help them connect and get the, uh, required, um, certifications and do everything that they can to make sure that they have a shot at these jobs, and it's, it's not just us, it's, it's, uh, it's a much, much, much bigger picture and, and it's something that desperately needs the support of folks like you.
Yeah, and, and, and I commend you, cause I do know, you know, the work that you do, you do a fantastic job, um.
Counselor Brown, if I,
Go ahead.
I could add something just about the, um, you know, part of the Neighborhood Hub work also includes, uh, Mass Housing is, has, is paying a local contractor who, uh, consultant who is talking to small businesses to understand, um, exactly what support they need and the barriers they have. She is looking, it's Samalit Hogan, um, I don't know if you know her, she used to be with the city. Um, and she is looking for more, for more local small contractors to talk to. So if you have lists, I would love to be able to share that with her, um, because those are exactly the sorts of things that is like, what, what do you, what, what's the piece that makes it, makes you able to bid, bid? Is it, you know, bonding, is it, you know, where are the, the gaps and how do we work to fill them? So again, if you've got a list, um, please, uh, and you're willing to share it, I would love to send that on to her.
Yeah, and I would like to even maybe have a meeting with some of the contractors and things around one day. Um, because honestly, it's, I try to explain to them when they come to me, I'm like, you do know, there's a quota that the city and even these different people who are doing these projects, they have to have a quota of minority contractors and people they have to hire. So number one, you're local, number two, you're a minority, if you be, um, black, brown, a woman, and, and they need you, so they're looking for, and you're qualified, okay, you're qualified. So now, I can assure you that they're looking for people like you. It's just you don't know where to go and what to do, but they need you probably worse than you need them. Like they're looking, cause it makes, you know, it makes every project, now when you have to sit there and you have to do a project, you know you have a good contractor there that you can trust and reliable. Um, so I know that there's a misconnect. So I do, um, you know, I appreciate, you know, your, your, your input, and we definitely have to do something to address, you know, why some people just don't know what's going on.
And that's the reason for creating an agency who is specifically created to build that, uh, network of minority contractors, to give them a voice, to give them a platform. What they do down in Hartford is they have monthly meetings where everybody comes on to a Zoom call, and they bring in developers to say, hey, I've got a project starting next month over in this town, and I need minority contractors, and everybody says, okay, where do I sign up? And, you know, there's lots of things that we could be doing, it's incredible how far behind we are up here in Springfield. We really,
And, and, and one thing, and I, I, one thing I would, I, I wanna still, um, I love everyone, so even when we speak minority groups and things like that, I think a lot of times we miss the, we miss, we miss, we miss what we're trying to accomplish because we're making it so inclusive. Uh, not in, not inclusive, excuse me, um, I find nothing wrong with, um, white contractors being involved in a minority contracting group. I think a lot of times, that's where we miss the shit, why can't we all still work together on certain causes? You know, it's just, I mean, I don't like to be so, now, yes, of course, I mean, if, if, if there's a discrepancy, but I'm not gonna sit there and say to a, a white contractor, like, hey, no, I mean, I would just like to make sure we watch what we say when we come to that.
And any small contractor is gonna face the same, uh, And any small contractor is going to face the same, uh, problems, right? I mean, it's, it's all the same issues. It's the credit, it's the balance sheet, it's the certifications, it's the, uh, references, it's the experience, it's, you know, all of that stuff. And it's wonderful when you've got a good, strong agency that can bridge those gaps, who can advocate for people, who can say, oh, you need this, yeah, here's where you go to get that. And, oh, you're, you've got all this experience doing this kind of work. Well, you know, we've got these folks over here who are looking for somebody with that experience. Or maybe you don't have the money to buy all the windows to do the window installation, but if the GC buys the windows and you install them, how'd that work? You know, can we make something happen here? And that's, and that takes time and effort. And, um, I, I'm very, very hopeful that, uh, in the end, Somalit and, uh, the work that she's doing will help us to create that kind of vehicle in the city. And, uh, and I hope that Drew's organization will be able to help implement it. Um, but maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, Jerry. I think there's a, there's a process that I've been very frustrated to see completed on this. I, I, you got me going there. I'm sorry.
No, no, I definitely love to hear. Um, definitely love to hear it. Definitely love what I'm hearing. I think, um, it's, it's an exciting project. It's basically, um, homes that people can actually get. You know, they don't, people, and when I say people, I mean, just the regular average Joe can actually now obtain housing. And to me, that's what's important. You know, I, 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 I don't, I, I support every class, middle, upper, any class, low, every class. So that's, but to be able to have houses within the community and have community people able to obtain them is, is always a win to me. Um, so I definitely commend you guys on your work. Um, is there anything else? Uh, Councilman Clint Bruce, I don't know, or anything, questions?
No, I think it's great information. Anytime we can. Uh, first of all, thank you, Chair, for hosting the meeting off of who are the, we, uh, uh, folks are on this line. I think it's great work. And, um, anytime we can do housing for our residents here in Springfield is great. Uh, but what I also, like, my, one of my pick was I took out some notes, but I think it's imperative that we figure out ways to, uh, get the community involved and, uh, contractors involved. Uh, so I'm going to really try to push you, uh, chairs to really hone in on having these, these Zoom meetings every month to, to, to put that issue. So I think that's a great, great idea to get information out about projects. So I guess Hartford is going in like a straight way, um, and making sure that our residents and contractors, we want to get involved. So, uh, to, to have the ability to get the access to it. So, uh, great meeting, uh, here to support those folks. Anytime we get to housing, I'm here for it. So thank you again, Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Clint Bruce. Um, and I appreciate you. Um, is there anyone else who wish to, uh, add?
Well, I would like to give Kendrick an opportunity. He's a brand new project manager and is going to be, uh, honchoing this, this effort up in Old Hill and has in his very brief time with us has really dug into this. Do you want to just talk quickly about where you're going with this project, Kendrick, and where you're at? Sorry to put you on the,
Uh, yeah, yeah, definitely. I definitely, uh, put me on the spot, but it's good practice. Um, so, yeah, as, as Tom said, I'm, I'm brand new on the project. Um, learning the city, learning the neighborhood and, um, just looking to, as, as Malo said, build, build a housing and, and create homeownership opportunities for the people in the community. I know, um, I, I, I hear your concern, um, and I've heard it, um, time and time again, uh, from, in, in every community that I've worked in. Um, people come into a community and build things and, um, it isn't accessible or isn't, it, it doesn't feel like it's available for the, the people that are, uh, actually in the community. It's actually something I'm very, uh, passionate about and, and so I, um, I'm looking forward to making sure that, um, that we actually are creating opportunities for the, uh, the people of Old Hill.
Thanks, Kendrick.
And appreciate you, Kendrick. I actually have, um, my, uh, brother, Dewan, he does the, uh, he does all that site stuff for BHN. So I'll make sure that I connect you with him. Um, if you, you know, you guys always, if you need any insights, always good to collaborate, different entities to collaborate and, um, to know each other. That's why I'm always glad to see Wayfinders working with Home City, you know, just, we all should be working together. So I definitely, um, appreciate your work and your, and, and your commitment. Are you from Springfield?
I'm originally from Florida. I moved here from the DC area. And so the, the, the issues that you speak about, um, people, people are talking about that in Washington DC as well. Uh, this is a big, a big issue there. And so it's, it's something I've been working on for a long time. Um, in my work with, um, affordable housing developers there. So, um, I'm, I'm happy to bring, bring my talents to, to Springfield and, and work with you, uh, Counselor Brown and work with, uh, everybody else in, in the city and, and, and try to do something, um, great for the, the, the people of the various communities around Springfield.
I appreciate you. Um, and with that in mind, I, I, um, if anyone want to have anything to say, I'll open up the floor. Okay, with that in mind, um, I'll get ready to close this out. Um, I appreciate everyone who wasn't intent, who wasn't attendance. I definitely appreciate Councilman Clint Bruce, my colleague. Um, I think this is a great project. Uh, I, I love everything that I hear as far as making sure that home ownership is obtainable, um, from the average, for the average Joe. And not just the average Joe, even a little bit, a little bit easier for someone who's even lower than the average Joe. I don't want to, you know, disparage anybody's name. But it's, it's, housing crisis is, is, is a real thing. And one thing you know about me is that I hate blight. Um, but I also want to make sure why we're repairing the blight and replacing the different housing and repairing it, that we're not pushing out our actual, um, community members. Um, so I love everything I hear as far as being able to lower the credit. Um, high, high, you know, different things that you can do in order to make sure that people can obtain these houses. So, um, I definitely commend you guys for your work. Um, I definitely appreciate you. I know that our committee will definitely support it. Um, I, I, if you guys can, can you, can I get, if you guys can email me your contacts so I can get some of the people out, some of the information. Um, but I, I'll definitely, I'm definitely in full support and I definitely commend you guys for the work that you're doing. So with that in mind, thank you. With that in mind, um, you guys have a good day and, um, we'll, uh, adjourn this meeting. Thank you, guys.